Ladies and gentlemen, we welcome you to the Equal Workshop Meeting of the Expert National School District Board of Directors. I'd like to announce that prior to this meeting, we had an executive session regarding student affairs, litigation, and personnel. We will be meeting again in an executive session subsequent to the meeting to discuss personnel issues. I am really pleased to see the crowd here because I happen to know that it's a group of our students who have Excel. There's nothing that warms my meek little heart better than seeing as many people there. Thomas, if you'll introduce our guests, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, what we're going to do is honor some champions that we've had this season from our sports team this past fall and winter. To date, we have the most championships in Berks County this year, so it's a great accomplishment so far, and hopefully, we're not done with the spring season that we're in. So, the first team and how we're going to work, so the teams know, is you're going to stand up when I talk about you, and then we're going to funnel out into the hallway. Mr. McFarland's going to show you where to go for a picture with Mr. Kramer. And then, the next team's going to come up, and we're going to funnel out. Okay? All right. Don't look so happy. All right. Our cheerleaders, please stand up and come forward. All right. Our cheerleading team won the Berks County Championship, won the District 3 Championship. They then went on in February down to the National Championship, and won the World Championship, and also the National Championship. We also have with us, because they're one very close knit family, is the JV cheerleading team behind them, who went down to Nationals and placed second. So, they've had an unbelievable career for these seniors, and also, I believe, it's the third straight Berks County Championship that they've won. So, congratulations, ladies. All right. There's too many people to do that. Ladies, you're going to follow out in the hallway to Mr. McFarland. He's going to show you where to get a picture. Thank you. Now, we're the girls volleyball team. All two of them.
Good job. Good job.
It's better.
Oh, good job. Good job.
What we have tonight, we have every one of our friends, a lot of our kids in multi-sports, and I know our head coach is a volleyball referee and refereeing the match, and our JV coach is our boys volleyball coach, and we have a match night. So, and the other kids do all the other sports in the spring. But, we have two of our all-counties, all-district, and all-state members here with us. When we beat Berks Catholic in the Berks County Championship, which was an unbelievable game and ending, I don't think that anybody will ever forget how it ended. And then, we went on to the Eastern Final, and unfortunately, season ended against Barkland, but we had just a wonderful career. These girls were freshmen when I started, and when they were sophomores, they went to the district final, and they had a great, unbelievable career. So, congratulations. Boys soccer, come on up. Our boys soccer team peaked at the right time this year. We went into counties, played a very tough game of bowling team that we beat in overtime in the quarterfinals, and then went on to play who everybody thought was the best team in the county and district, who ended up winning the district in the 39. And we beat them 2-1 in overtime as well?
Yep.
Okay.
Penalty pitch.
I have to remember, penalty pitch, which was, it seemed like it was the county final, an unbelievable game at Governor Midland. Then, we went on to the Berks County Championship at Topahawk, and we beat Wyomis in 4-0. So, most of these kids are back next year, a lot of underclassmen. Again, like I said, they gelled at the right time. We're looking for a lot of good things to come from them next year. So, congratulations, guys. And again, just like the boys soccer team, our boys bowling team came out of nowhere from the regular season. We were in the quarterfinals against Hamburg, and I don't think anyone expected us to win, but their coach always says, "If they do what they're supposed to do, they'll win." And they ended up winning that match, went on and bowled against Wilson in the semifinal, and beat them, and then went up against the Connor Weiser team, who everybody thought was the best team, and no one could beat them, and somehow, you guys did it, and won the county title for the second straight year in a row. So, congratulations, guys. Right now, to the left. Thank you. Girls tennis, come on up. Come on. Our girls tennis team, so many accomplishments from last fall for the team. They won the Berks County Championship, they won the district championship for the first time ever, and then went on to the state tournament for the second straight year. So, this group of girls, we had zero seniors, so we have everybody back next year. Yeah, so it's been an unbelievable drive for them in the last two years, and looking for a lot of great things to come. Obviously, we have a lot of individual accomplishments, the singles that Ally Snyder won, and doubles that Ally, Sammy Snyder, won. So, it's been fun. Tennis goes, ends very early in the fall, so it seems like such a long time ago that they competed, but I know they're working hard and getting ready for next year, and congratulations.
Well, congratulations. The first thing next year, they were laughing when you said, "There's no seniors."
Yeah, rain or rain. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Evening.
Good evening.
I report to the board of directors. I've taken the orders we have outlined, and it was nice. I know the board's sentiment now and some thoughts, and I was heading in that direction about PSSA testing and about what it is, and I kind of think it's crazy at this point. We have six orders taken, nine years, or nine days of testing. It's kind of crazy. I mean, I think it's gone too far. But, it sure is nice to be on the other end of it when you do really well. And it is a feather in the hat, and a cap for the kids who work hard in the teachers who do well, it's nice to be recognized. And of course, it was nice to get the $42,000 that came with it. Mrs. Klein was very, she wasn't taking notes for an answer, and she submitted grant, and they kicked it back, and she submitted again, and they kicked it back, and she changed it again, and finally, you know, was given all the money for Title I, which allows us to get a lot of things that we can use in our school. So, it was a great windfall for us, and it sort of was nice. So, when we were at Lausch, we recognized us as a Title I distinguished school, and it was right in the middle of the whole transition of us going from Lausch to Jackson Wall, and it kind of went all by the wayside. And, you know, this year, we took time off to celebrate, and everyone's proud of it. And our teachers and our parents and our students are proud of it. It was a nice accomplishment. Our math program is going well. I can say to date right now that not one parent has called me with a complaint or in any way, shape, or form about that, having not had one phone call, which is kind of amazing. I think that we've gone lengths to inform them. Our teachers are doing a great job in sending home materials for the teachers and resources for them. And I'm not saying everyone knows what to do, and everyone's, you know, jumping off the roof to do something they've never done before, but they see it, they've gotten letters from me, they've gotten newsletters, different things, explaining that this is what we should be doing. And it is, it's challenging for the kids, but I see their minds changing. I see their minds changing all the time. I see the teachers' minds changing, see the way they're thinking and how they're delivering math. It's interesting. It's the kind of way, it's how I've always thought we should teach math. So, for me personally, it's kind of nice to see and to watch my son do it, because it's sticky, it's grainy kids, it's having them think as opposed to having them just learn something and repeat it and not know why they're doing it. We're doing our observations, walk-throughs, all the formal observations. I think Mr. Vlad has to sign it, and then we're finished with that for this year. And that's a time-consuming process. Evaluations are time-consuming, and I don't know to date how we look at that whole process, but it's kind of crazy that I observe someone, and we'll talk about what was on for a long time afterwards. It's, you know, this process to go through, this reflecting, this emails back and forth, it's not that personal touch it used to be. And I don't know how this is a step forward, but where the state's having us do, anyway we are, and those are finished for today, for this year. It was interesting this year that I did walk-throughs with Mrs. Cook. And so, I went to Watten, and we walked through, did walk-throughs at Watten, and she came first to Jackson Wald, and we did walk-throughs at Jackson Wald. More than anything, it was interesting just to see, like, I don't go in to see other people's teachers, you know? I see our teachers all the time, but I don't see other people's, other buildings and other elementary school teachers teach. And it's just interesting how the whole dynamic kind of is different in some places. The kids are different, you know, the school's different, the teachers are different, and we're only three-quarters of a mile away, and we're doing the exact same things. It was interesting and fun. You know, it was fun to do, we went out of fourth grade, and had a lot of changes that I knew in there because of sports with my son, and communion, and CCD, and everything. I think I knew a handful, six, seven, eight kids in every class, and it was kind of fun. Except when I got into my son's class, he was so happy about that, but he's going, "Oh, my God, really?" So, we have Retruer Jolz, we've done three of them, and it's something that really is a concern. I was the principal of the building where we had an intruder, where a guy came with a gun. And I know that whole situation too well, all too well. And it's really, it's really hard to kind of relay that to somebody, what's going on when that happens, until you've been in that situation. And you could train as much as you want to train, in my personal opinion. I mean, training's obviously a good thing, and it's, you know, you think that you go to that in that time, but it comes down to what do you do at that split second as to what happens? It's not like you have a list in your pocket that you carry with you all the time, what do you do if this happens? You know, it comes down to common sense and what would you do? How do they go? I mean, we did it when a guy came, previous, when I was an administrator in Lebanon, and he came with my first kids. And so, I knew already, he wasn't coming for everybody else's kids, he was coming for his kids. And he just wanted to take them, he didn't come to hurt them, and no one was going to stop him. I guess that would have been me trying to stop him, and that's why I always look bad for the principal when these things go down. But, you know, Retruer Jolz, I look at it from a different perspective, and I see that, you know, some things that we're doing aren't the best thing that we should do, and we're going to make some changes and do some things that I think are in the best interest of all our kids. Because safety's, you know, it's the ultimate thing that we do. My job ultimately in that school is to keep those kids safe. That's the first thing before anything. So, you know, we practiced them, and we just had some work done, Ken Pitts approved it and Ann paid for it. We had some situations where when we would make an all-call, you couldn't hear it in the cafeteria, you couldn't hear it in the gymnasium, because we had microphones that were on in those places. The gym teacher, hobbies are playing when the kids are doing games and stuff. Or the cafeteria ladies have the microphone on to talk to the kids. So, we had to put a system in to override that, because that's the most, that's the most place that we have, you know, there's 100 kids in a cafeteria, and it's a loud this place, and it's close to where you would come into the school. It was just a dangerous place, so I'm grateful that we were able to get that done. Certainly, an important part of it, we do an all-call, there's a situation, we know what to do, but they have to hear it first. Our PLs at the time certainly worked out wonderfully this year, for sure. It's been a year this year, so our teachers had time to work on the math and to work continually on what they're doing, because they're fighting an uphill battle. They're learning just as the kids are learning, and it's a lot of work, it's a lot of change. It's like going to teach a new grade level or something, here's a whole thing to learn, don't care how long you've been teaching, there's stuff to learn. So, that time has really been beneficial. Outside of that allergic bug bite that we had, that one reaction that we had, we had 813 straight days of no injuries, which is good in school, and it's amazing, it's still to this point, you know, people all talk, they make jokes, and whatever they do, I don't care as long as we're safe, that's fine. Our fourth-grade students participated in E-Mission, and when we do that every year, and thank you first of all to the board for approving some of that, and the Exeter Community Foundation, the Education Foundation, probably paid for part of that, it's like a $1,600 a day for our kids. But, they plan and they work at it, and you talk about applying real science to what they're doing. They're going into the whole things of projecting what they need for food, what they need for fuel, how far away is this rocket, how they're trying to find it, and they're getting back and forth from someone from NASA on the distance learning program. And, you know, the people over here at NASA are really impressed by how well our students are. They're prepared, they do a nice job, and every one of them goes out of their way to say, "Hey, listen," you know, they're preparing to talk to each other, and they basically say, "We're doing a really nice job, the kids are prepared." We have, our assemblies, since school's gotten kind of more and more demanding on our kids, without any question, our assemblies have gone to, instead of having some assembly where we're trying to teach kids, yet one more thing, our assemblies are, "Let's have some fun." If the kids, 40 minutes a time or 45 minutes, if it's three times a year, let them enjoy it. And we had this group of Chinese acrobats who came, the kids went crazy, it was phenomenal. And they had all kinds of things that they were doing, it's like, you know, take your breath away from the kids, and people like, "Hi, big sis." Going up there was kind of neat to see. We have our positive behavior interventions, which we continue to do, and as I said, the research shows that this is one thing, good behavior spikes, and we continue to have our raffles, and we do our drawings, and the children have to have, you know, great days in school, put their name into the raffle, and the kids in classroom, and I don't know if Mr. Quinter had enjoyed any ham this year, it was the first time your granddaughter won, right? You were the recipient of one of the hams this year, and that's always, it's a great day, it's a good time for the kids, and everybody who puts something in wins, which is, you know, a little bit of money for the school store, our goldenrod dollars. It's a good thing, it's a fun thing, and it's for a good mission, for a good reason. And I'll end with our building climate, because it's just an important thing. I mean, it's, it's the start of what we do. It's the start of why I think we're very successful there. I, you know, we have a job to do, but it's a whole lot easier to do the job in a nice environment than it is, it's not a nice environment. It doesn't, one doesn't make the other one, but it's a whole lot harder to get the one without the first one. And it's something that I've always looked at, and I think it's always, I've said from day one, you know, I look at schools, and you look at what their mission statements are, you look at districts, you look at what their mission statements are, and you can walk down and talk to anyone, and no one has a clue what it is. I mean, I, and I should be able to, but I can't tell you three words of what ours is. And I can't, I don't know that I go to any other school, but they would know what it is. In our building, we have one. And our building, our building one is this, you know, "My job is to make sure that you want to come to work and do a good job. Your job is to make sure these kids want to come to school and learn." It's pretty simple. If I do my job and you do your job, we have it all going on. Parents are happy, teachers are happy, I'm happy, kids are happy, everyone's doing a good job. And if we have a base, let's go forward, let's get it done. And, you know, it's a whole, it's a little city, it's a little city of kids and adults that we have to toll work in congruence, and I think that part of that whole climate fosters people working together, and when people work together, good things happen. So, it's something I'm going to continue to work on and continue to foster and make sure that we're always on the right page there. Any questions for me? Yes, Mrs. Hush?
I have a comment and a question. It's nice to see that the E-Mission is still received with such enthusiasm. That was really cool.
Turn on your speaker.
That better?
Better for them, I think. Can't hear? They can't hear.
I think, it's nice to see that the E-Mission continues with such enthusiasm. I thought it was really neat, and I saw it a few years ago, so I'm glad you're doing it still. And I'd like to know where the Chinese acro, how did you find out about the Chinese acrobats?
I got an email one day, and it was like they had, they had some available dates in our area. And so, I called up and required a lot of them, and it was, it was a lot, it was like $600 for 45 minutes. And our APT, they paid for our assemblies. And so, I said, I called the APT president, I go, "Listen, how about we get these," and they were like, "Ah, ah, ah." I go, "Let's just roll with it, see what happens." So, I know the gym teacher said to one of the president, he said, "You know, where does he get the acrobats if he was a schlosser, right?" Meanwhile, I looked over and, you know, I think he was clapping, and he carried on, it was a great joke for the kids, and you know what, they need that. You know, we still can never lose that, for me, always a big picture, looking at the big picture. We can't lose sight of the fact these kids are K-4, these kids are five and six years old. It can't just be, there's got to be fun for kids. It's got to be schools, they're going to remember that E-Mission, they're going to remember those acrobats, they're not going to remember what they did in science that day, or what they did, oh, science, they should remember that day. They're not going to remember what story they read, or how they answered that prompt that day. It was fun that they had it, and you know, it's, the days are far between, but I just think it's something we need to hold on to, because they're kids. I know what I want, what I want for my son. He works hard all the time, I want him to have fun in school, I want him to enjoy it.
Finally, I was wondering, did we put anything on our webpage about this $4,200 grant?
Yes. Yes.
We did.
It's on the, it's a headline on the main page.
I missed it. Well, thank you for telling me.
I think it was up there for a while, I don't know if it's still there.
It's back up.
Oh, it is back up. I looked for it, it was down there.
Thank you. You know this thing turns off automatically?
Yes. Just your turn.
Is that just to tell you to touch it?
No, it's just being, you've got to monitor, don't let it go talk for sure. Or someone else talks and they're relying.
Dr. Schlosser, with your school climate, have you seen a decrease in misbehavior of your students, or better engagement of your students, or have you engaged with your school project as far as a positive effect on the student?
Oh, I think, you know, it's, of course, what I'm saying, it's a positive influence. It was the subject of my dissertation, actually. You know, I looked for schools that I, my hypothesis was to try to say that schools where the climate is good, they're going to have, their achievement will follow. That wasn't necessarily the case. But, what I did find out is that, what I didn't expect to find out, I found out is that where the climate is seen the same way of the principal and the teachers, that's when there was significant achievement in, with your testing and what they were doing. See, when there's congruence with the bus, like some schools, like, they felt the climate was lousy, and so did the principal, they still did well. And the schools that did the best were the schools where the teachers thought the climate was great, and the principal thought it was great, it's usually the other way around. Principal thinks it's the greatest place on earth, teachers, not so much. So, that's where it went awry. So, you know, when there's congruence, it's something. But, I know for sure, it's a situation where, I think almost all the discipline that I get from school is on the bus. It's almost, you know, we have a couple of kids here and there that we had the situations, but it's almost always the bus. We put 75, 80 kids on a bus, and no one to supervise them, and it's loud, and it's noisy, and they carry on, and you know, that's where all my action comes from, essentially all of it. Otherwise, you know, our kids are happy, I think that when it comes time for PSSA, we tell them, "Hey, listen, just do your best." I talked to one in every classroom the other day when we started, and said, "You know, this isn't stressful." Stressful is when you're standing in a room and filling up your water, you don't know how to swim, that's stressful. This is just a test. This is a test, this is something that you've been trained for, and all they're asking you to do is do your best. You know, if you read the questions, make sure you know what they're asking. When people ask all the choices, make your best choice, and just do your best. When this day's over, you pull them up, you give them to bank account for tomorrow, you start a new again. So, I think that they respond to that. I think when we ask them to do things that they do, because they're happy where they are.
Someone else must be giving some instructions to them. Carter came home and said, "Puffy, I can't even sneeze unless I raise my hand."
I'm sure someone said that I told her that I would intervene and give her special permission to sneeze. It's kind of crazy to say, it makes us like put other teachers in a classroom doing a kid, really. We have to walk, you have to walk with students in third grade to the bathroom to make sure that they don't have, you know, full back cups out of the, somehow, syrup in it and get the answer. You know, how crazy is this? We have to, what we call potty patrol, we have to get volunteers and retired people who come in and do potty patrol. So, the kids need to go to the bathroom, someone to walk to, stand outside the potty. I don't know, some, but, any other questions? Very nothing?
Thank you, Joe.
Very nothing? Yeah. Thank you.
Mrs. Guidish.
Did you ask Brad? What next, David?
I was going to wait until after Mrs. Guidish gives her presentation, and that's the B-Fuck proposal.
At your place is the PowerPoint, which I will share with you now, and it's a passion, which this, some support about the presentation. This evening is continuation of our budget discussion. We're in the proposed final phase now. Intensive adoption of the budget is needed. Well, tonight, I really want to focus on the five-year projection. In putting this together, I really, I have a lot of loss for what story can I tell, even a picture can I paint, because there are so many things that are being drawn, Governor Harrisburg, so many different proposals, pension report, property tax relief, increases in basic ed funding, a new basic ed funding formula, special ed funding, increased charter school reform. There's so much going on that I really can't project what is really going to end up being the education budget and what will come to this district. So, really, what I'm going to show you as far as a five-year projection is based on history, what we've been receiving, as well as our trend in revenue, trending in expense based upon economy, and see, let you look at what is going to happen to our fund balance as time goes on. I truly hope that the state and the legislators are able to come together, come up with a new funding formula for basic ed, provide the funds that schools need, because we've got challenges to face going forward. So, anyway, first few slides are really just to recap timeline. The 12th is a special voting meeting, intensive adoption of the budget. June 16th is when the final budget is adopted and knowledge is set. Our brief history of tax increases over the past five years. This current year, it was 1.48% increase. So, they have been below the index allowed by Act 12. Looking at from the preliminary, adopted in February, where we are now, we've reduced our expenses by $1 million, minor change in revenues before any tax increases, our current knowledge. The current proposed budget, we reduced the capital project amount from $1,67,000, by down by $300,000 based upon review that took place on April 1st, and how we prioritize pushing some things out that really aren't necessary at this point. We're going to continue to review certain things, including the track replacement, so let's in process. This is a summary of the current year. Right now, projecting a loss of $150,000, pretty much balancing the budget next year. No tax increase, a deficit of $2.8 million. Minor change in revenues before any tax increases, our current millage. The current proposed budget, we reduced the capital project amount from $1,67,000 by, down by $300,000 based upon a review that took place on April 1st and how we prioritize pushing some things out that really aren't necessary at this point. We're going to continue to review certain things, including the track replacement. Let's unprocess. This is a summary of the current year. Right now projecting the loss of $150,000, pretty much balancing the budget next year. No tax increase, a deficit of $2.8 million. A 1.5% increase, deficit of 2.1. Two and a half percent is our index. With that rate of increase in millage, the deficit will be down to 1.7 million. We qualify for a special ed exception and a pension exception. So taking those, the maximum we could increase would be 4.52%. We reduce the deficit to 800, 900,000. But the way the law is written, this budget adopted cannot be, your unassigned fund balance cannot be more than 8% of your expenditures. So these two options, the way that the commitments and assignments are managed at this point, we could not take these exceptions unless we decided to increase assignments or commitments. Thinking about what should we, should we include something of the governor's proposal? Half of his basic ed and special ed funding, just going forward here. Half of this could be approximately $430,000. If we were to include that as additional revenue, then it changes the numbers a little bit. Then the increase would be limited to a one and a half percent tax increase. Again, based upon how we are managing assignments and the commitments. Going back about including any of the new funds we could raise at the TV index. I'm not including any of these charter school savings. I'm not sure how they're coming up with that figure. So at this point, I'm still on the fence whether to include any of the funds. Other districts, they're everyone, they're all over, but some are including any of the new funds, some are including 25%, some more than that. So it's really difficult at this point.
And, um, you got 50% with that, include 50% of the special ed funding or how did you do on the special ed funding?
I basically just took half of the additional state.
Half of the whole state?
Half of the 891. As in breaking it up between basic ed and, it would just be half the change.
And from what I understand, the governor is proposing something like $5,000 and some dollars to give to charter schools. And he's also proposing that, you know, remember Governor Forman at one time, he used to get some kind of charter school reimbursement, you know, and, and then the Governor Forman said, "They don't have any more money." He, he was also going to add, you know, that, that amount to, to this, for charter schools. You know, that we would get that, that money to help us with the charter schools we had today.
Right.
That's what, that's what I had read.
Yes. And, um, and I can bring it up. The last meeting that we had, that charter school reimbursement is rolled into the basic ed funding. That's part of the $606,000. And you're right, the tuition rate he proposed for charter schools would be $5,950 for regular ed students. And then the special ed rate would be based upon the category of the special ed student. Same as they determine the funding. Which somehow they use numbers to come up with this, 632, to be the savings, but I haven't been able to tie out to that number.
Well, what year are they looking at in terms of our expenditures or how are they projecting what our expenditures?
Well, first of all, I don't...
How many kids we have and, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I...
What do they, what figure are they using such a moving target?
Right. I don't know if they've gathered statistics from the charter schools, you know, I'm not yet, I'm not sure. So this is just a summary. Any increases in VEF, basic education, special ed tied to the severance tax on natural gas, pension report in 1617. Increased profits from the control board, property tax relief in 1617 tied to increasing the personal income tax and the sales tax. So moving on to what were the projections for 1516 to 1920, the next five years. I list different assumptions. Our index based upon, our adjusted index based upon the fiscal, we had a fiscal office forecast. Ours will be between, well, estimated between 2.9 and 3.4, barring four years following 1516. That additional index, it would generate about 1.2, 1.5 million per year if we would raise taxes that much. Other local sources, one and a half to 2%. Subsidies, health plan, social security, retirement, they're driven by wages and the contribution rate increase. Wage projection, we have contracts in place through 63016. Following years, two and a half percent plus column movement, teachers, if they earn extra credits, they can move along the columns and receive additional increases. So I add in additional $300,000 per year for that. Benefits, healthcare.
You're just projecting it based on previous contracts?
The $300,000 based upon experience, what I've seen.
And sorry, the wages are based on previous...
The wages, right. The, um... And the retirement rate, I list that the increases, all of the benefits remain the same. Non-person health expenses, those are the factors. So it's fairly straightforward. Our enrollment, we had years of increasing enrollment, student population. And now it appears to be leveling off. This is a very simple projection. I use some data from PDE's projections. We'll have to wait and see what actually happens as we move forward through the next few years. Professional staff, this really is just a spreadsheet that I use more in the past. Now, you know, it's very difficult to use any kind of staff ratio because we have a lot of program needs, special program needs that you can't just apply a factor to your population and determine your staff. But it's very interesting that we had in 2009, 10, 330 professional staff. For 1516, we did 303, if I counted right. We're adding one, proposing one teacher for a transition program at the high school. I have not incorporated any reduction of teachers in the forecast just because we're leveling out. And also any savings from attrition. Those savings will offset any new staff request. Because for example, this year, we have attritional savings of $375,000. Our staffing requests are at a cost of about $411,000. So in this projection, I am not reflecting any additional attritional savings that may occur. But for purposes of this, I'm not. Uh, this is just a sample of some of the spreadsheets which I've included in the additional documentation. This is hard to read, but it is very straightforward. You can take a look at the different scenarios. This illustrates increasing millage by the Act 1 index. 2.5, 2.9, 2.9, 3, 3. The handouts, actually, you'll be able to read those. But this is the expense portion. Here's the summary of all that data. Then this is the Act 1 index. This is showing a scenario that if we were to increase by the index in each of the next five years, based on the average house, value of a household, what those increases would cost per year to a household assessed at $107,000 approximately.
That median, that's what I'm doing?
It's the median.
It's the assessed value?
It's the assessed value, yeah. Yes, faster. The revenue, you know, really is being driven by the index increase expense. Obviously, there's disparity and we'll see a few slides later of really what is driving that, it's the pension and benefit changes. But we will, under these projections, we'll be dealing with a deficit. Which by the end of the fifth year would be about $4.5 million. And obviously, using your fund balance to balance your budget really is not a good thing. I mean, it can help in some years, but if we continue to do it, it just depletes the fund balance.
So if you look at that, and I know we've had this discussion before about the school district on a trajectory toward bankruptcy. You can be in bankruptcy for a long time, losing a lot of money. In 2019, 2020, is that considered bankrupt at that point with a, with a $2 million underfunded fund balance, almost a $4.6 million loss? I mean, does that, does that trigger some kind of proceeding with the state? Does that require, you know, I don't know what the act is, where somebody comes in and runs your school district? I mean, what does that do?
I really don't want to get there. I don't want to be a school district in distress. I don't know what triggers it. I think what's important here is that, a couple of things. We don't know what the funding is going to be going forward.
We know it's going to be this year.
Right, right. We can only hope for the best. But under this scenario and being limited by an index, we may have some pension exceptions. Not sure about the special ed. I don't incorporate that in here. We have to start tackling this deficit now and reducing it. Now included in these expense numbers, there are, there is a million for facility as a placeholder for improvements each year. So are those really one-time costs? There is a budget reserve of $300,000. But I'll also point out that there are opportunities to save after, when we start looking at the contracts going forward. I mean, we have benefits for X-Flex, which, very generous benefits. I don't know, the, the trust now is working on coming up with plans that possibly would reduce the increase. I'm using a seven and a half percent increase in how it could cost. Me going out.
I think that, didn't we already know for sure that it wouldn't be above six?
Well, this year I included six, but in the out years. So there are, you know, what is the reality going to be? Are these numbers a little bit conservative, seven and a half percent? All I can hope is that we come up with plans that reduces the district's premium significantly so that there aren't the 6% increases or the 7%. But we really need to look at some of the special pay retirement benefits, the X-Flex, if we have to continue to feed this, this pension.
But you're, you're going to have to take away benefits. I mean, because if you look at it right now, over the last five years, based on the numbers that you have here, enrollment has dropped by almost 9% on this chart you put together. But our budget has continually increased. So the only, the only, the expenses are going to continue to grow unless we start taking away things that we already have out there. I mean, that's, there's, what other option is there? If you're asking about managing expenses.
Right. You're going to have to look at your staff and other areas.
I'm just asking for verification that that ECR enrollment is up. But did the enrollment count is included, given that we have the cyber school?
I'm just looking at what she gave us here.
Just the people enrolled in our school.
Right. We're paying for people in cyber school and that's the point that I'm trying to make. So when you say it's dropped and our expenses are going up, maybe our expenses are going up because of the, the college system in cyber school. And they're not included in that. And that's just what I'm trying to clarify.
We're still part of your population.
We're still, we're still paying.
I can't, all I have is EPSC role play. I don't know what that means. It doesn't include cyber. It's not that dramatic, but the fact of the matter is that even with the reduction in enrollment, the costs are going up.
But our staff, our staffing has also gone down 90% or so.
Yes, it has. Yes, it has.
I know, but our costs haven't gone up.
Because pensions will win this.
No, I'm, that's what I'm saying. What I'm saying is there are costs over which we have no control. But we couldn't equate the drop in enrollment with the drop in costs.
Right.
Well, that's, that's the point that's been made over and over again regarding charter schools and that sort of arrangement. That the fact that I take five children out of a classroom, I still have to maintain the building, I still have to pay the teacher, I still have to have the books there. So removing a small number of children is not going to make a bit of difference in your expenses.
The state's basic funding premise is... No, it's not going to make a difference in your expenses, but you're going to continue to run a deficit. So you have to change and cut in other places if you want to get out of that deficit position, which is what it's causing. Right?
Correct. And you're limited in the places that you can cut because so many of the expenses are outside of your control. You have no, no choice but to pay. And you can't refuse a child a service because of lack of money. That's just the way the law is.
And unfortunately, we have so many unfunded mandates. And in particular, when you think of it, all this testing and the price of the testing for all the, you know, for all this excessive testing.
Right.
And, you know, and which is, they've been brought to us from the federal government and from the state government. So if they perform those things, which I think they should, because most parents and teachers know, I mean, they're tested, but they, they never find out what their students didn't know. I mean, how, you know, how, how is that, how is that test about? When you don't even know how you can, you know, change things. Because usually when you have a test, you test to see and you find out what the students don't know. And you never find that out in these PSSAs and in these, these zones and wherever else. So it's absolutely an invalid way to, to understand what the children that are taking this need to become proficient or, you know, or whatever, excel. So it's, it's ridiculous, you know, that this testing has gone on and, and it's the, I, I know many parents are, especially up in New York, are opting out of these tests for these kids. I mean, these kids are so stressed out taking, as Mr. Schloss, Dr. Schloss has said, in third graders taking nine out of nine tests. I mean, it's ridiculous.
Well, we have a resolution on that, and that addresses that. Yeah, that was actually Dr. Davies' idea and it was a really good one. And we have another addressing a fair funding formulas, so.
Well, I, I want to tell you, I was at a meeting, a, a breakfast on Saturday. And Representative Gillen was there. Well, he was, he was really adamant about all these tests. And he is on the education room.
Yeah.
He was also adamant about charter schools. I loved what he said. He said, "I believe in choice, but you know what? You pay for that choice. This is a public institution. We have public dollars. These for-profits and these nonprofits are making so much money on our children. He wants to repeal the charter school, so I'm all for it."
Yeah, yeah. Good.
What'd you say?
I, I said that politicians can say whatever they want, particularly if it's something that gets no traction within the legislature. It'll die in committee every time.
Well, you know what? We have to play, we have to, we have to, I don't believe charter schools. I don't believe public money should go for profit, to profit for people making $500,000 a year.
I, I don't believe it's true either, Pat, and I'll tell you what, I believe it's unconstitutional.
I believe it's unconstitutional.
And I think the real, I think the real mistake that many of these state associations that claim that they don't support it, the big mistake that they made is that no one's litigated. It has been litigated in 12 states successfully.
Right. You know what? And I think our Pennsylvania constitution is far stronger than many other state constitutions.
And I think our Pennsylvania constitution is far stronger than many other state constitutions. Because that was the only thing that, if you read the Pennsylvania state constitution, they don't want money going to private corporations. It was just public.
Okay, please, we'll get back to that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I just had to say that.
This chart illustrates the disparity between revenue and expense that grows from 1.7 million in 1516 to 4.6, base, assuming that a millage is increased by the index, just by the index each year. Again, that's problematic because you're using your fund balance and what really needs to happen is some tough decisions have to be made to cut expense. But hopefully, some of our programs proposing will.
Do you have a, I mean, it's important, but do you have concern, you know, we're here in Rush, you might know this country, the state budget is probably going to be tied until the end of the year because Democratic governor and Republican governor.
I'm, I'm here at the end of September.
So what impact would not having definitive numbers have on us in terms of this process?
In terms of the process? Well, we would, what we've done in the past, well, we can make some assumptions.
Happened before.
Right. Are you, well, in terms of...
Well, I guess my question is, do we, first of all, do we still have to meet the deadlines for budget decisions?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
And, you know, obviously, if you were looking at several hundred thousand or several million dollars of state money, you don't know whether it's going to be there or not.
Then, you know, my recommendation is really not to include it. Business as usual. Look at your opportunities for index exceptions possibly. So really, you know, we have to go move ahead and talk based upon, you know, the historical trend, what we know.
And we have to pay our bills whether or not the state is, has decided how much money it's going to send us, so.
Unfortunately, the taxes are mostly paid in the early part of the year. So we're, we're living off of next month's money or the second, the third and fourth quarters' money in the first part in the hopes that the state will kick in their portion to make up that advance spend, is what it is.
And you may ask, well, why this growing disparity? And it really comes down to wages and benefits. Looking at wages as a percentage of our total budget in this projection, 42%. Over five years, increasing 5.4 million, looking at the pieces of benefits, healthcare. Now, seven and a half percent, that might be a little conservative, maybe won't be that high, I don't know. 2.6 million pizzers, the gross increase, 4.8, and the other benefits. Adding that together, that's a $13 million increase over a five-year period. The budget in total in the projection, expense increasing 14 million. So the other non-personnel expenses really, it's minor increases in what I've assumed, or, you know, to say pretty much flat. So this is, this is the area where if things don't change, we're really going to have to tackle staff in order to get to a point where we can balance our budget. And this basically is just a summary of revenue and expense over the five-year period. My assumptions, increasing the line about 10 million, and that's, that's an increase of the index. And there is pretty much the deficit spending level that we would be at. Another scenario, by, increasing by 1.5%. It just, really exacerbates the problem of, of the deficit by, you know, a small tax increase. While I know we, there's, we were able to almost balance the budget this year, there are many reasons, you know, things do change, but we've been squeezing hard in a lot of different areas and the only juice we're going to find anymore, I think, is in staffing and benefits. There might be a couple other areas, but... Another scenario, if we increase to the maximum, which is that 4.52, 5, 4.5% increase, we'd add additional $152 per year for property assessed at $107,000. And then, these years reflect the index plus small pension exceptions that I've calculated. Again, it's still in a deficit position, but not as severe as the other two scenarios. Summary of the millage impact, the max, they said $152, two and a half percent index, $84 additional to taxpayer assessed at $107,000, and a 1.5% increase, $50. And here are the history of the increases. This year is 1.48% for $49 per year increase in taxes. The next few slides really are just recaps of what we looked at prior, but we'll have it, we have a full package of data expenditures. Again, we're looking at a $3.5 million increase, our estimate for this year to next year. Staffing requests, we are still discussing some of these, because that is $425,000 that's added to the budget. And again, these are the major cost drivers. I'm looking at different financing for telephone system, the one-to-one and buses, meeting with a local bank tomorrow to see whether a capital lease would relieve some pressure going forward. Taking that option could relieve pressure on the overall budget.
And Angela, on page 23, you have substitute teacher for reading. What's that?
We've had a teacher in Karen Dunzio as a reading coach for two years now. So every year, we have to add the dollar for substitute that's in the classroom, so.
Oh, is that what that is?
A teacher on special assignment, yeah. She's a teacher on special assignment, pulled out of the classroom, a year, a four-year-long assignment to work as reading coach, so we put a sub in for her to hold her place back from school.
Oh, okay, okay. I don't understand this.
Reading coach, yeah.
For the reading coach, oh, okay. So you're doing that year by year?
Yeah.
Depending on funding. She's been, you're not making this proposition, correct?
Not at this point.
Not at this point because of funding issues, you know, as long as we can find some grant money.
Oh, so she, she's doing part and grand?
Kind of one part.
So part and grand, yeah.
Proportionally.
Okay, I thought anyone said that.
What's instructional technology specialist that is to be hired?
That is a, a position with the same as Dan Wolchak, to coach the teachers on the technology used in the classroom. And adding to that.
Why, why would we need another person?
Well, we're, because of the one-to-one rollout that we have at the high school, there is a need to continue training and to push in with coaching. Additionally, just by looking at the junior high schedule, because what we've been trying to do this past year is align the programming in the junior high to support the technology at the senior high. We're going to be integrating a lot more of the technology requirements into the curriculum in the junior high throughout next year and having a person like Dan Wolchak, who's excellent, supporting teachers in, in that curriculum writing and being able to train them and support them and using that curriculum in their classroom, not just, you know, in a, in a computer lab apartment, it's going to take more staffing. We're also, in addition to that, we are working with our librarians in the secondary level to, to support with that as well because the, the old librarian is somewhat changing due to the, the high need of media being digital nowadays rather than just paperback, just, just books. So we're, they're supporting this initiative well.
So the instructional technology specialist would be hired at $89,000 to $85,000, is that?
That's including benefits.
Oh. Oh, I thought that was...
Yeah. That would be pretty, yeah, expensive.
But a substitute teacher in reading is $20,000 plus. If we look at the difference between the substitute for Karen Dunzio.
Part of it has to do with certification. The, the, there's a certification that's, that's needed, am I correct with that? And we just don't have the...
Any experience? It's harder to find candidates and they tend to have some experience and be a little more costly to hire. It's just an estimate, we have no idea.
Right, I would have used a master's plus, you know, four or five years' experience compared to, you know, the staff.
The open staff.
Position.
Excellent.
Well, what is so wrong about having a first-year teacher? I mean, why do we have to have four or five years' experience? I mean, I mean, when I was a first-year teacher, I mean, I was done home to do my very, very best. I don't understand.
Well, we're talking about the instructional technology position. That's usually a teacher with, it has to be a teacher with experience and then who goes on and gets the specialty.
Master's degree.
So it's only for that one, Pat. We hire a lot of new teachers.
Oh, yeah. I would hope so, because...
Well, we hire the best person that applies, but a lot, but a lot of times, especially, you know, for certain certifications that are very common, like elementary, things like that, we tend to, to get some really great newer people, like you suggested, who are, who are very enthusiastic and, and, yeah, maybe who had been sub day-to-day and then long-term subs and have proven themselves, but are still at the beginning of their career. But when you're looking for a position like instructional technology specialist, you're looking at someone who's been tard a few years, then went on to get a master's degree in that field. You're not looking at someone just with a bachelor's degree. You wouldn't have...
You don't have to be a master.
Yeah. So that, that makes a big difference in the salary.
I think Dan came to us with five, six years teaching.
That basically wraps it up. This is just some additional slides. I'd just like to give a complete package so that you're not sorting through a bunch of handouts. Commitments, this one outlines the assignments, and this was the capital project where these were deferred. Next week, Gloria's going to present for food service report, but I'll review the food service budget and the capital project budget. But we will have to have some, since we're a little less than a month away for tentative adoption of the proposed final. Of course, I'm trying to get as much information as I can on what might happen in Harrisburg, but we'll have to discuss what to include in that tentative in the, in the way of a millage increase or whatever the board's desire is.
Ian, can I get this from you a little while? There are some slides, PSBA will be calling on legislators at the beginning of next week, and there are some slides here that I'll need.
Two questions that come from the board. I do want to point out, in your five-year projections, assumptions, you're holding the state funding and the federal funding basically flat for that entire period. I understand it for the purposes of projection, but I think that's, the tone in Harrisburg is they don't have any money, but they want to give us some. So it, I think the projection should be taken with that in mind, that those are flat.
Right.
It's where we're worst-case scenario. Certainly not best-case scenario.
I don't know what's the worst-case scenario.
Board member comments, questions?
Maybe more realistic than we like to think.
I'll open up to the gallery for a few minutes. Any comments from the public? Sure.
It looks like no matter the...
Sir, if you could identify yourself.
Sure, Robert Womble. It, it looks like a deficit is the future. And no matter how you decide to raise the millage or whatever, moving in the wrong direction financially, is it really the best time to be spending 3.64 million plus, you know, adding that in? It just seems like, maybe that's not the best time. Maybe fixing the bad section of the track for $25,000 instead of replacing it for $227,000, maybe that might be something to consider. Maybe just replacing the roof and the pumps at current facility, maybe that's something that's... I'm just trying to throw some things out because there's hundreds of people who are questioning the transportation center, is it the right time? You know, everybody would love to do things, a pool, maybe a media room, maybe a brand-new car. You know, there's people, there's hundreds of people going to be laid off from surgical specialties. And I'm, and I'm just trying to, you know, throw this out there because if, if we're going to be rocketing towards a deficit, and it looks like that's the case, just maybe, maybe we need to think about things, you know? Just, just throw that out there because I hear that, I walked around and I've talked to so many people in my neighborhood and at Giant and stuff like that, and everybody is concerned about that. You know, we all support bus drivers and transportation, they do a great job, but we're just concerned about our taxes.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments? We'll move on.
Sir? Yes. My name is Dr. Lefosse and I live on Tyler Road. I want to re-emphasize what this gentleman just said. And for the life of me, I don't understand $500 a square foot for building a garage. I find that difficult to accept. Has the board investigated other options like perhaps acquiring some of the adjacent properties to the existing building and expanding the parking, renovating that building, or either other buildings in the district that could service as a bus, as a transportation facility without going through $3.5 million?
I'm going to go backwards probably. We did look at, I'm going to use this little mic for a little work. We did look at other buildings in the area probably about two, two and a half or more years ago, maybe more than three or years, less than three years. One I know that looked at was the furniture building that's down by the Turkey Hill, behind the post office, when it went out of business. It's changed since then. We walked through that whole building, tried to see if it would fit our operation, what would need to be done. Site's too small, doesn't work for what we're doing. We looked at the properties adjacent to Kerr Road, when the property came for sale. It didn't give us really a lot of added space. Once we looked at it, we were going to have to do that. When we look at the overall cost of that $3.5 million is a general number, we're not going to, you know, it's plus, minus, it's a general number. And we say that great, $500 per square foot, it's not the building, it's $500 per square foot. I mean, we have to do the landfill. We have to come and do the grading, we have to do the paving, we have to make sure the fence goes up. I mean, it's all these other contributing pieces that go into that. I think as we looked at it on April 1st... I think as we looked at it on April 1st, we saw the breakdown of the actual building, which I don't have those numbers, but that was, say, a third of the cost as a general number, maybe it was up to half, but it wasn't the three-point-five. You know, I don't think we can look at that as the big number, five hundred dollars per square foot, because we are doing a total land development project. It's impacting a piece of land. I mean, and there's, and there are things that we looked at and reducing that by being able to use the onsite stormwater controls. If we were to look expansion on the existing site as we have explored and we reviewed back in February, what we found was, and we actually refuted, actually refuted completely back to 2014, we went over again in February, what we found was that we were not going to be able to use that site completely any longer due to the fact that if we go and make improvements, we're now going to go out of our grandfather clause and go into current restrictions of instruction in that area. And because it is a non-conform use for the lot according to zoning, we then have to go before the zoning board just to use the property for that. We then have our stormwater controls, which are going to create either a basin, like you would see on most developments, or we're going to have underwater storm control. That's going to have a good amount of cost. We're looking at putting a fence in the site. We have to have offset from the fence for our operation, we can bring green space in. We start looking at that, and then the efficiencies that we build into our system that we've found over the years that make this operation work and a feasible opportunity for extra township start fading away. Because as we start moving our facility apart, and I know some people said, why can't we use this building? This is another place we explored back in February. Can I just blow out lounge? You know, the back end of this, I have a garage in the basement, I add on to that garage, I take the soccer field on the upper side, I make that into a parking facility. The reason we did not do that is because we looked and said, we are not an extra township. We are in St. Lawrence Borough. It's a whole different political atmosphere. Not good, not bad, just different. And we are in a totally residential zone, same type of impact we have at Kerr Road. Now, when Kerr Road came into existence and when I moved into the area in 1992, across from Kerr Road, that was an old field and it was an old farmhouse there and an old barn. Now residential community. Not even talking about the shellboard traffic, we're just talking about the transition of that whole community has become a total residential environment, where now you're impacting neighbors, same thing here. I put a full bus facility here, I have neighbors that backed up to this, and I have to start wondering, you know, if I own that property, you own the property, great, I got a big bus garage behind me, or I got a big bus parking lot. You know, what is the impact? It's a quiet neighbor, but it doesn't quite have the same beauty that you had when you looked down and you saw that beautiful green playing field and the children running around. You know, when we're looking at Kerr Road, it is what it is. It's an existing site. When we look at Awon and Creek, where we are, our neighbors, we have one or two neighbors adjacent, not looking into the site. The main thing we have as neighbors, St. Catherine's. You know, that's, it's a different kind of environment working there. You know, is this a great solution? Is it a perfect solution? Is it one of our better solutions? It may be the better solution as far as timing, to address the gentleman. I don't know if there's a right timing. If they were looking at this in 1985, it wasn't the right timing. And they're looking at before I got here, six years ago, it wasn't the right timing. And when I started looking at this four years ago, it wasn't the right timing. And now we are here in 2015, it's not the right timing. And we've been looking at the increasing deficit due to the Peasars Fund, which we can see our match goes to almost sixteen percent in the next couple of years. We start seeing, basically, it doesn't matter, there is no right time. However, if we look at that building, and I know that we've, some of us have walked through it, only some haven't, it's, it's not functioning for what it has to do. When we have an operation of fifty-plus buses and we have a number of vans, and we only have one workday, that's not operating in a way where we can do the adequate maintenance we need to do on our facilities.
Jim?
So, I'm sorry, thanks about that.
Well, one, the idea that we're going bankrupt is, school districts still go bankrupt. The state assumes the responsibility for funding them, and this.
I think we need to be clear about it. We use bankruptcy a lot in our minutes. If you go through our minutes.
Well, I know we do, and we've been talking about it.
And I'm just saying it may not be appropriate to use.
We are talking, we've been talking about it for years, and we've based our fiscal policy on it for years. We are in the top half fiscally or financially of this five-hundred school district. The state has to do something about funding public education. That's all there is to it. We decided three or four years ago that we could not tax our way out of this situation, and we have levied our taxes accordingly. You look at that four- or five-year thing, there's not one year there where we taxed to the maximum. And this board, knowing the personnel of this board, we're not going to tax to the maximum. And it's not my, we have a couple of people like to, but we will remain nameless. But the fact is, this is a projection if nothing is done. There are several things this board has discussed doing to relieve this situation without raising taxes and in fact possibly lowering taxes. So this is a fine projection based upon nothing being done at the state, nothing being done here at this, by this board, and it is just that. We don't even know how much money we're going to get from the state this year. The state was supposed to give us fifteen percent, we're playing on twenty-five percent. And that is what we have had for the last three or four years, is that reduced level of funding. So the board is taking the initiative and is investigating other ways to do this with no intention of raising taxes any more than the rate of inflation, basically. It costs more for petrol, it costs more for paper, and those prices will always increase. But you look at a seventy-million-dollar budget a year, what is two-million dollars, three-million dollars spread out over twenty years?
They pay a lot of interest on that money if you're vision and borrow it in the first place. So it's going to jump out.
I'm saying this, sir, I respect your opinion, but this does not tell the whole story. This, this is a flat projection. This board, this district.
But it's one more expenditure on the red side.
It's one more measure that has to be taken to maintain our operations. I have heard people say, what does that have to do with education? Well, if the kid is sitting home in his living room and can't get to school, that's pretty critical so far as education is concerned.
There's no question about that. There's no question you're going to maintain the buses. That's, that's not the question. The question is, can you find a more cost-effective way of doing this?
And the answer to that is no.
Well, I'd like to object to that because a couple of, Jim, okay, but, you know, Jim, you talk about we don't want to go to the township for an exception for the issues on the property there, yet we're going for an exception on the property here at Alton.
Okay. I'm going to call this to an end. Right now, we've got a whole agenda. On the 28th of this month, we have, Tuesday, the last Tuesday of this month, we have a public meeting where we can discuss anything the public desires. And I've already told her, the superintendent bears some additional information on the bus barn. I would like you to come then, all right, sir? Thank you, sir. Moving on.
But what is the difference between that exception and the mask at one place and ask?
There were nine exceptions that we had to add for the bus barn.
We never formally asked for an exception on any of that property. We never went through the process with the downtown.
We are stopping discussion with it right now. Next Tuesday, we will have two sets of minutes to review, to accept. So if there are any exceptions in those minutes of time, we'll voice them, they'll start making changes. We'll also be reviewing a board policy on graduation requirements for third reading and for acceptance at that time. Back to tomorrow, business functions.
Under 6A, we are going to be voting on a recommendation the board of school directors approve budget transfers for the month in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. Under 6B, it's going to be recommended that the school, board of school directors approves a resolution in support of urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to establish a new funding formula for basic education. Under 6C, on the next page, it is recommended that the board of school directors approves a resolution supporting locally developed aesthetic assessments as drivers of destruction, calls on the governor, state legislature, and state boards and administrators to reexamine public school accountability systems and to develop a system based on multiple forms of evidence and does not require extensive standardized testing. It calls on the U.S. Congress and administration to overhaul the elementary and secondary education. Under 6D, it's going to be recommended that the board of school directors approves the property tax refund in the amount of two-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars to the property owners Thomas and Carol Herbert due to the exemption granted per the Department of Military and Veteran Affairs. Under E, it is recommended that the board of school directors appoint Dr. Elizabeth Weber as the management representative to the Berks County School District's Health Trust effective January, July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2017. Under F, it's going to be recommended that the board of school directors ratifies the renewal of electricity procurement agreement with direct energy for a twenty-four-month period from June 1st, 2015 through May 31st, 2017. The fixed price is six-point-one-nine cents per kilowatt hour. This is the same price as in the current contract, which expires on May 31st, 2015. The board of school directors authorized district administration to execute an electricity purchase with direct energy at a cost not to exceed a five percent increase at the February 17th, 2015 meeting. Under G.
Oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Have we looked at the, say, joint purchasing agreement with the IU for electricity? Is that possible?
We had discussed it a few years ago, and pretty much the districts and the county, really, they were all on different cycles and they really went their own way. Our districts large them, but we, you know, we're always saving just by what we're doing directly with direct energy. The last time around, we did look at another broker, we shopped with different companies, and really direct energy came out ahead. So right now, the districts are all on different contracts, renewal period. So, but we are with consortium for diesel, natural gas, heating oil, but this one, everyone's kind of doing more.
And the second part of my question is, you did mention seeking alternatives two years ago. Have you looked at alternative providers at this point?
Well, when you're looking at working with a broker, with direct energy, there's no broker fee. With the other options out there, we were paying a broker fee. In addition, and there, direct energy is very, very competitive, and at the time, that this was what the rates were, was brought to our attention, that's why we decided to better act, because now rates are starting to look bad, moving up a little bit again. And this is a very good rate if you compare it to two years ago. Prior to this current contract, the rate was seven-point-five cents a kilowatt hour. So, we locked in because it was going, it was going up, went up, goes up very quickly and slowed down, so it was high as, same quarter, and we would wait, you know, a few more days. Finally, we locked in.
Under 6G, it is going to be recommended that the board of school directors authorizes the advertising for the bids for the Lorraine Elementary School parking lot paving project. Under H, it is going to be recommended that the board of school directors ratifies an information technology services agreement with Global Data Caving Consultants LLC to perform professional services for ongoing support and enhancements to Exeter Township's school district's network and computer infrastructure. The charge is a hundred-and-eighteen dollars per hour for a fifty-hour block of service time, and the specific services included are MS SharePoint Services, server operating systems and associated outlet support, application support, cleanup and security, and training and knowledge transfer.
Are we voting not to exceed the fifty-hour block? Whereas are you buying, are we buying this in fifty-hour blocks?
No, he's just committing to fifty, a fifty-hour.
Under 6I, it is reported that the Pennsylvania Department of Education has approved Plan Con Art K, Project Refinancing of Issuance of General Obligation Notes Series of 2015 to refund the General Obligation Bonds Series A of 2009 and Series B of 2009. The reimbursable percentage on the refunded bonds is twenty-three, twenty-five, three percent.
Any questions?
There's two more on the addendum. Under 6J, it is going to be recommended that the board of school directors authorizes the filing of a request for a special exemption with the Zone Hearing Board of Exeter Township for construction of a transportation center on district property located at 5,000 Boyer Town Pike, and directs the administration, director, solicitor, architect, and engineer to take any and all necessary actions to carry out the request for a special exemption. And finally, under 6K, on the addendum, it is recommended that the board of school directors authorizes district administration to accept a proposal from Conrad Sebo Actuaries for a medical reimbursement plan evaluation X-Flex of planned compliance with Affordable Care Act regulations at a cost not to exceed one-thousand-five-hundred dollars. And the board directs administration to take steps to ensure compliance, which may include the development of a plan document.
Now, questions?
Question I have is regarding business function 6K. How does this affect our current medical plan potentially and contract now with our crews for this evaluation? Is this due to the special catalytic taxes that could go on the current care rate? And what would be, we would be responsible for doing that?
That's what this would tell us if we would have a problem with X-Flex and our compliance with that and what we would have to do about it. It doesn't change anything, it just gives us the facts we need to move forward and see if we need to.
Right, you for?
We will renegotiate the contract next year.
Yeah, I just didn't know.
If we get this this year, we are prepared. Any other questions, comments?
I guess I have a question concerning the budget transfers. If we're transferring one-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, it seems like we're doing, I mean, that's a great amount of budget transfers. Can you kind of turn that to why, whatever was the original budgets are now being transferred now?
The transfers that are on there, one of them relates to moving ahead with an automated timekeeping system this year rather than next year, and took it out of next year's budget and using funds that were available from our mat materials budget. If you recall, mat materials came in prior to July 1, and we had to report them last year, thirteen, fourteen. So there were funds available. So that is one of the major things that is in the transfers. The other item would be if we were to move ahead this year with cameras for the buses. There's been some pressure to get that done. There's been some, um, pressure to get that done because of incidents that have been happening. And I'm struggling to find my attachment to see what else there was. But it's the timekeeping system and I had shared that last budget meeting that we'd like to do it this year and use available funds this year.
So, where are you taking these from?
From the map material accounts.
I see somebody transferred from operation maintenance electricity to operation maintenance cars, place, place a thousand.
All right, that is for additional supplies that Mr. Pitts will need, uh, through the rest of this year for, uh, things that are being, uh, improved. And we've looked at the electricity estimate, uh, for this year and there are ample funds to move for the supplies that he needs.
I was just wondering, it just seemed like a prolonged amount of-
And that will happen toward the end of the year, especially in operations and maintenance as he finds a need for more supplies or, uh, repair costs.
Question on, uh, motion J, just looking for an explanation of what any and all necessary actions mean. My concern is that the public enters an appearance before the zoning hearing board and if they rule in favor of the district, when somebody enters an appearance, they have a chance to take it to the appellate court, which would potentially cost the district significantly, potentially legal funds. And I'm just wondering what any and all means.
Any and all means in preparation with package.
Typically, just an application from the zoning board, zoning board has their attorney there. We have our attorney. We look at what the zoning ordinance is. We put up our justification why we're going to do it and that board decides whether they want to report.
What I'm saying is, is if, if, if somebody in the community decides to contest, they enter an appearance before the zoning hearing board and then contest and ends up in what, protocol please?
It would be separation.
Well, yeah, that would probably come back, but at least as I understand the terms, any and all, I think, authorizes the architect to do what the architect has to do for a special exception. Authorizes solicitor what he has to do, authorizes the engineer what they have to do because they all have different components, parts.
So, but we don't, we don't have an exception yet, but I think last night there was a discussion at the council supervisor meeting about, uh, filtration study being conducted on the property on Friday. And I'm just wondering why we would have made that request without having even a zoning exception to move forward with that. I mean, I don't know. We, uh, we authorized a boring study as a board. Um, we didn't authorize filtration study on a piece of property that's not even, uh, we haven't received an exemption on that. And I'm just wondering, and an exception. So, I'm wondering how we, how, why we're not putting the part before the course because we're absorbing expenses for something that potentially may not even move forward.
Two different avenues. One thing is dealing strictly with engineering, one thing is dealing with legal documents. Engineers move forward, engineering tracks, legal people move forward, legal tracks. The engineer needs to do his underlying geotechnical study in order to understand how he has to move forward with his design, whether he has to put stormwater controls or whether the existing ground can maintain what's being proposed. He's doing his design, his due diligence, understanding if he can actually use the property where it's needed. And then he can come back to the client, which is extra council.
We're paying.
And explain what is happening. Yes, we pay for that and that's part of our contract service. In turn, that engineer is also preparing the documents along with the architect, which he will go before the zoning board, will show what the existing uses are on that site as well as the impacts of what he's planning on doing and the potential exceptions that are required in order to do the project. Standard process, it happens in every township, every month of Westers, a real downturn in the economy.
I'd like to put this letter on the record then from the zoning board, which went to, uh, to, uh, Bob and me today. You probably didn't even see it yet. Purpose of this email is to make everyone aware that our engineering consultant was contacted last week by the Exeter Township School District consultant to schedule filtration testing at the Watten Creek property this Friday, April seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen. Absent zoning approval or submission of plans our consultants suggested to township be contacted. I'd again like to respectfully suggest, and I don't know what that means if there have been conversations before this, that the district and its consultants follow the logical succession of approvals to avoid the risk of unnecessary expenses. Advancing to physical testing required to prepare stormwater plans for a property that hasn't secured and may not secure land use approve is risky.
This is your originator, that man?
Cheryl Frank, the zoning officer from the township. If the district chooses to advance to physical testing and would like our consultant to witness the testing, we need a written acknowledgement sent to Troy. I'm assuming that's Troy Bingham and he'll stay in our consultant time and expenses will be paid. If anyone has any questions or would like to discuss this further or if I can be of any assistance as the Exeter Township School District navigates through the approval process, I'm more than happy to help. In fact, it's in the best interest of the district if we can discuss the zoning ordinance, whether or not the bus facility is able to be considered an accessory use or an accessory building to the elementary school, Cheryl Frank.
Well, I was aware of the filtration testing, Stackhouse. I mean, the way it's explained to me, they have to continue to do these things to move the process forward. And, you know, under the agreement with the architect, with the, maybe the engineer that we're responding for certain things that have to take place, uh, which to me, this was one of those things.
And the only thing I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we had requested of Cheryl or the district had requested, the district's people had requested, was that meeting on April twentieth, which she felt it should be deferred until the meeting on April twenty-seventh. I mean, that's the only, the only thing I recall for, unless there were other conversations that I wasn't-
No, it was just-
From what I understand, from, from, from the engineer, you, you have to do this. You don't do just one train and then another train, another train. There are certain things that you do concurrently. And as you move forward with the request for special exception, you're also looking to, to get the land development approval that you need rather than doing it sequentially. So, this, this is a normal process of, of land development. They're, they'll be going forward with that. They'll be going forward with the special exception concurrently. They'll be doing the files. So, that's not unusual, although I cannot make a filtration study either.
Mike, who was that email sent to? It was only sent to the president and vice president of board and the response back to Angela. And I assume it was based off conversations, I assume.
What can you-
Was there a discussion last night at the supervisors?
Oh, I see, okay, greetings. Well, what's the board's, you know, which to?
No, we, we have authorized the planning on this. This is part of the plan. And, uh-
It seems strange, that letter seems really strange as the law was said to say, don't do this before you-
I'll explain the letter to you if you have a second position.
It just seems to me if you're gonna, if you're gonna, if you're required to submit a plan, the filtration study is going to determine what's included in that. And, and, and they're going to ask you whether you did the filtration study or not. It's going to be part of your presentation and I think that it really, actually makes sense as you explain the development of the land.
Any other questions? That could bend your personnel. Thank you, Dr. Carter.
First item is retirement from Donald Zook, longtime teacher. Uh, part B, we have resignations for administrative staff, support staff, and extracurricular staff. Part C are appointments of sophisticated staff, substitute teacher, guest teacher, and support staff. Uh, part D, we have a leave of absence for administrative staff and support staff. Uh, part E are number of changes status of support staff and extracurricular staff. The final item, part F, are staff conferences, um, one through nine on the main agenda and an additional staff conference on the addendum. Any questions on personnel?
Yeah, I have a question. There are a number of these, uh, staff fitness, uh, where this one was on March twenty-fourth, the other one on April first, then March twenty-fourth, Nancy's one, March thirtieth. These are all after the staff? Um, are you talking about the conferences? I'm, I'm talking about the support staff.
Oh, oh, um, yes.
So, this, it's like after the staff, but these people are, you know, tested in, they've been tested, tested, now it's going through.
But that's when there was a resignation that's not approved.
No, but I mean, I'm sorry, what?
The resignations. So, we don't have control over when.
When they resign.
Yeah, yeah, well, in other words, March twenty-fourth, uh, they have been passed the board meeting.
Oh, well, how, how much notice might they give us?
Uh, so, um, the support staff is, um, is two weeks.
Just two weeks?
Yeah, cafeteria substitute, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the, the Jennifer Pardish one, um, she only had a job for a couple of weeks and practically gave us no notice. There's not much we can do to them.
Oh, no, you can do it.
Not ever hired, you know. Yeah.
But I, I can remember as a teacher, I mean, you had to give at least a sixty-day notice.
Yeah, that's the law.
Yeah, these are teachers though.
But not, but not, yeah, I can separate, yeah, two weeks. Well, that kind of makes it difficult then to find someone else.
It's what we're betting.
Well, I mean, can, can we not change that in the, in the contract going forward, another contract? I mean, do they have to give you a month notice or something?
It's very hard to, to enforce personal services. You just cannot.
To keep them from taking another job, sometimes their, their new employer says you must report.
Yeah, want, want to give the job to someone?
Yeah, if you can't report Monday, you don't have the job.
Oh, okay. I mean, I didn't know that, that, you know, they could do it in two weeks.
Yeah, we, you know, we asked, but we don't understand.
Very. Really unsticking functions.
I had an A, a bunch of trips with the sixteen-hour ladies. B are trips beyond the sixteen-hour hours and so are the others. March the sixteenth, twenty-first, twenty-sixth. Do you see if that was going to mess up your money?
Yeah, neither do I. Usually I'm right on because I always, I'm going to be asked that question.
I'll ask, I'll probably ask next week that we break off number three, vote that separately from number one.
Do you want to know how many days? I can, I can check the calendar and see.
Okay. Oh, well, you can bring that next week.
Next week, okay.
You want to break off item C too?
No, no, being three.
All right, and, um, one, wow. Kids would do that as well this year and I'm impressed. Find, uh, if you're, if you're, you're happy for seeing the questions, maybe, you know, a couple of things clear, you know, here, you probably bring up one or two.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Davis, your current programs.
Uh, it will be recommended that the Board of School Directors authorize the appropriate school representative to submit to the Pennsylvania Department of Education contingent on federal and state funding for, of the following grants, Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Alternative Education, and the Accountability Blocks Grant and/or the Ready to Learn Grant.
Why don't you do one with that?
Dave, it's one and a half days, by the way, that he wrote right on there.
Thank you.
We will be recommending that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of, uh, two textbooks, literature grade nine and literature grade ten. They have been returned by the board member.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that. It was behind me trying to roll your hands at the speech because that just became terrible. For the past two weeks, because I had the trouble of doing the joints, I couldn't think of silly things.
Yeah, but they're sixteen.
It's like sixteen-year-old, these kids are muffed.
But I'm sorry, it's a bad thing. Too bad because it's got really, you know, interesting, uh, things. I hope that some of the reflector work again, it's a need to, uh, fight the building every time. It's a lot of questions to work on.
I only have to wear this stuff now.
I had, I had a similar concern with the scriptures, uh, but at the curriculum meeting last week, I learned that this book, uh, possibly would only be used during class time and the students would have the internet access at home. So, that alleviated my fears about the book.
Well, the, um, we did hear back from, um, Mrs. Kayeski. I didn't pronounce it wrong this time. And the, there is a cost difference, but it's not significant in terms of getting a class set versus a, um, an entire, everybody getting a, a copy of it just because the licenses will go to the individual rather than the book. So, it is a little bit of a savings and it's something that we're going to certainly pursue, but it's just not something that we can just buy the class sets.
Right, but they still will have, if we buy the books as we said we would, they will have the online access at home. That's, that's a certainty.
Absolutely. They will absolutely. And then another one of the questions that was asked, um, last week that she did report back on was the, um, will the copyright changes, will they still have access to the previous book, the two thousand twelve edition that we are purchasing here? And the answer is likely.
Likely, that's a very definite answer there.
Could you, could you have those costs for us next week?
Sure, actually, I can put them in your, I can, I have a, an incomplete set of answers. Please give me one more piece, but absolutely open them in your packet.
So, we know that one we're voting?
Yes, there.
I, I had a more academic concern that, uh, my idea of literature is when students read books. And I, and I raised that at the curriculum committee meeting and I got a, what I thought was a satisfactory answer that this book, volume is supplemented by real books, real literature at, during the class.
Are there any other matters to come before the board?
Oh, I have one more before I'm done.
Okay.
And it's also, uh, we're going to start the process, uh, for the thirty-day review for another textbook and that textbook is in the area of chemistry. Now, I'll just-
Excuse me, Mr. engineer. Uh, we just have a, um, Mr. Kane brought over a book today, uh, for the AP stats class. So, that'll be also on next week's agenda for the thirty-day review so we can get that in before the, uh, end of May.
One of the chief.
So, what, uh, what chemistry, this chemistry program?
Big part? Yeah, AP chemistry.
And that, is that the one that one of the students told us that he could get online? There was an AP course that I can't remember right now, but he said that he, it was-
I recall part of that conversation, I can't.
And I can't remember which.
You're looking at one class set though for this, am I right?
Yeah.
Probably will be running in one section.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, even, even so, it was, I thought it was remarkable that he could find the entire course online. The same one that we're teaching. Do you remember that, Mr. Kane?
Yeah.
I do. I also know it was illegal.
Really?
Somebody had scanned the book into a PDF file.
Oh, yes.
Not really the way we want to go.
Wow, shucks.
Look to your college.
Isn't that, did that kid know that?
Probably not.
I'm directed at everything. Uh, the AP topic reminded me of the, uh, conference we're sending Christina Finkerton to, the AP. When, when is it planned that, that AP history course, art history course will be added to the program?
It's in next year.
This coming year?
It's for the fifteen, sixteen school year.
Oh, one year at a time. No, this coming year. This coming year.
Not this year. The one that will start in August.
Not this year, the one that will start in August.
Thank you.
I have, I want to bring something forward for it.
Okay, are we done with curriculum?
Yes, we are, thank you.
Now you may speak.
Um, I had read about, you know, PSBA, the vice corporate member, who submitted platform items, you know, to be presented at the government fairs, um, that, that, I think, that's the, you know, legislative platform, that will be, uh, in, I don't know exactly where Kate is, but I have, you know, when we talk to, uh, to, uh, the, 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 are they, are they, or?
Yeah, but.
Yeah, and so I was thinking, maybe we, we might get together and maybe put some things together, especially in lieu of some of the things that, you know, that we're putting forward as far as, um, reservations. So, um...
Pat, the process is that that'll have to be submitted by June thirtieth, and it would be considered in an August meeting of the platform committee, which would evaluate and decide which ones to bring forward in the, uh, first meeting, if you're comfortable.
But also, even if your, if yours doesn't come before the, now, they say you will present this, you could, at the meeting, present your proposal and, uh, have them on, I mean, that's what I read here.
Yeah, I've never, never seen that.
No, they won't allow it. You, you can't give it at the meeting, they just, they don't entertain the motions of the board.
That's what I read out there.
They don't entertain motions of the board.
Okay, well, maybe I'll do it again.
I'm sorry, I've already been shouted down, so.
I'm sorry, what?
I said, I've already been shouted down at.
Anything else for the consideration of the board?
Yes, um, we have some upcoming training for the board, um, board docs, a program that, um, we purchased that will allow us to be, um, more or less paperless, uh, and we were hoping to be able to do it in conjunction with a board meeting, but alas, we're at the mercy of the presenters and the trainers, so, uh, we're looking at a possible date in May, and I believe May seventh is the, uh, the first date, which is, uh, the curriculum committee meeting, that's the, I'm sorry, May fifth. Uh, I knew if I trusted my memory, it would fail. Uh, May fifth is the curriculum committee meeting, and some board members will be here already, you know, already for the curriculum committee meeting, but we would like to get as many board members as possible. Other dates available are the twentieth or the twenty-first.
Um, May seventh or maybe twenty-second, first.
Right. Uh, none of those are board meeting nights. The twentieth and twenty-first are, what, Thursday?
Wednesday and Thursday.
Yeah. So I was hoping maybe the seventh, you know, if, um, the fifth, I'm sorry, I don't know why.
The seventh is the convention.
Maybe that's what we think.
Would be a perfect function.
Well, then, I don't think they're available on the seventh. May fifth is the, uh, first Tuesday in May, and that's the curriculum committee meeting.
What time?
So we would be training prior to the meeting, like, uh, what, four thirty to six thirty?
Well, actually, six to seven is a big curriculum at seven.
Okay.
It's an hour, though?
It's an hour.
Very slow. Oh, yeah, many, many questions.
Uh, well, I, we'd like to have an idea of, you know, if that one might work, if people would be, you know. Is there anybody who knows they cannot be there? Okay. All right, I'll send out a reminder, but we'll say the fifth, I think that will probably work better than the twenty-first, because we have another board meeting on Tuesday, and that would require another night that's in May. And I won't say the seventh.
All right.
I'm working with the group down.
Uh, Dr. Trumore. We do that with the executive committee, should take about ten, fifteen minutes, be the way out to the screen. Motion to adjourn?
So.
To adjourn.